All right, I'm going to go ahead and call the City Commission meeting to order. If you'd please stand if able to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. We will go ahead and get started with roll call. Benson?
Here.
Brunick?
Here.
Hanoff?
Here.
Johnson?
Present.
Minor?
Here.
Shrum?
Here.
Villanueva?
Present.
Weber?
Here.
Mayor Mosher?
Here.
City Manager Leon?
Here.
City Attorney Denherter?
Here.
Next under routine business is to approve the minutes of the work session meeting of January 22nd, 2024, and the regular meeting of January 22nd, 2024. What is your pleasure?
Move that we approve the minutes?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public want to comment on the minutes? All right, seeing no movement, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay, and anybody abstaining. All right, minutes passed. Next, under routine business is the schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
Move to pay the bills.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on paying the bills? And anybody in the public? Roll call. Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Shrum?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher? Aye, motion carries. Number four under routine business is the City Managers' Report, and I do want to share something kind of fun that happened last week. You probably saw it in social media before I turned it over to Amy. But K T I V was in town, and they did, they're doing a feature on Yankton, just kind of all the cool things going on in Yankton. So if you get a chance, it will air, I'm told, Valentine's Day. So I said, boy, there is nothing better on Valentine's Day than to start by finding out things about Yankton. So if you hadn't caught that on social media, I know quite a few folks posted that because he was here last week filming that, make sure to check that out. So I just wanted to let you know, we'll be in the news talking about all the great things in Yankton. And talking about all the great things in Yankton, I'll turn it over to the City Manager.
I've got a few things, some great, others informative. Want to talk to first about sales tax. For those of you who looked at the report, you saw that we had kind of a surprise here at the end of the year. So month end December, sales tax was down 23.96%. And so we talked to Lisa about that, and why is that number the way it is? Well, that doesn't mean that we had a terrible economic month. The state informed us that they did an audit, conducted an audit dating back to 2020, actually, and had to make an over $300,000 adjustment, I think closer, almost to $400,000 adjustment. So that's the number you see reflected there. We're still year-end. That puts us up 3.2% year-end, but that is less than what we budgeted for in terms of where we estimated. So there wasn't anything Lisa, or I, or Al, or any of you could have done to predict that. That's, that kind of thing happens. So that's an adjustment made by the state. That's part of the reason why we do tend to, when we budget, be very conservative in our estimates, in our revenues, and generous in our expenditures, because you just don't know. What does that mean for us today going forward? It means we're going to have to be a little more careful, even more careful than we thought we'd need to be in 2024, and we'll take a look at that as we get closer to construction season and how our sales tax starts coming in. So hopefully, we'll have a strong January, and that'll continue. Happy to answer questions of the media or of the public if they have more questions about that as well. But just wanted to bring that forward in case people saw that and thought, what's going on there? So that's our sales tax information. Want to mention to you and to the public that in the packet, there's information about citywide cleanup. Citywide cleanup will start in late March, when you can start bringing things to the transfer station. Our first curbside pickup day, I believe, is Monday, April 1st. So we'll start getting PSAs out about that, when you can start putting things out on the curb, what's accepted, et cetera. So we will ask that people not put out things before those dates, but we'll be talking about that. Also, before we meet again on February 25th is Battle of the Badges. This will be, I believe, the eighth year, is that?
Sixth year.
Sixth year, excuse me, I'm ahead, sixth year of the--
That's probably because quite a few of them feel like they've played eight.
YPD versus YFD EMS. I'm not making any predictions. After last night's game, I think you, we all know that things can go, even in the 11th hour, they can be tight. So we'll see what happens. But no matter win or lose, that's a great event, lots of fun, lots of camaraderie, lots of trash talk, but all for a good cause. So we hope people come out. That's at Simple Arena, and I believe it's at 2:00, is that correct, Mike?
The first game?
First game's going to be starting, I believe it's at 1:30.
1:30?
Yep.
Okay, so please make plans for that. Mayor, that's all I have unless there's any questions of me, or unless you have something you'd like to add before public appearances.
So any commissioners that have questions for the City Manager? Well, seeing no microphones, come on then. We do have, next would be public appearance, and usually, we open this up for a time and a place for folks in the public to adjust the City Commission. But we would ask your indulgence, because we're springing one of our own tonight. So I believe I do have special guests in the hallway, so if they would make their way in. Watch this. Oh, boy. I know a lot of you don't know the folks that just joined us in the room, but you're, now I say I couldn't, I'm not supposed to look at Al, and I did. Dang it, Al, don't do this to me. For all of you that don't know, tonight is Al's official last City Commission meeting. And we can't let that go without making a big deal out of it. So I think if Al thought he was going to quietly ride a horse into the sunset, he should have known better. And we were very excited to work with his family to pull off a surprise tonight. You're going to have to bear with me, if you can't tell also how special it is, I have a two-page proclamation, and I think it's the first time I've ever had a two-page proclamation. In fact, when I was working with Colleen to get it put together, I said, do we even have a frame big enough? And by golly, I should have known better. Colleen pulled it off. I'm going to read off the paper, because she was also nice enough to put it in 16-point font. Might help me get through it, too. So I'm not going to look anybody, but thank you for your indulgence in allowing us to read this. Al, if you want to collect your thoughts, we are going to give you a chance. One, to introduce the fine folks that are here tonight. I know I'll probably be talking about a couple of them, but we'd love to meet them as well. All right. Proclamation for Al Varick. Whereas Al has been a tireless employee and advocate of the City of Yankton as finance officer since September 8th, 1998. During that time, he has also served as interim City Manager on three occasions, which I'm sure he thinks many days are like 20, but on three, excuse me, three occasions. Al worked tirelessly in his position as finance officer to keep the city in a sound financial position. He was extremely dedicated to his work and put in countless hours to ensure the job got done. In addition to that, he was a great boss to work for. He always took time to listen and to discuss issues with you. He was a fair and considerate, he was fair and considerate, and maintained a good sense of humor. He was also the office fix-it person, using his handyman skills to quickly repair many things, big and small, that have saved countless hours and dollars in repair bills. And whereas during Al's tenure, he has been involved with a variety of committees, and bo, excuse me, and boards, including, but not limited to, the Library Board, Parks and Recreation Board, City County Planning Committee, City Policy, County Sheriff's Committee, Planning and Zoning Board, Gulf Board, Changarney Airport Advisory Board, Yankton Area Progressive Growth, and many others. Not many, if any, of his fellow employees would have a bad word to say about the way he handled himself in his position within the city. He was caring, fair, professional, and approachable. He was often sought out by fellow employees and community members for his advice. His advice always came without judgment and with support. He was willing to give his opinion, but not push any agenda. Not only did Al understand all things municipal finance, but he also understood all the intricacies of municipal government. Al was the patriarch of the Yankton City Hall. He provided a voice of reason and calm during stressful times. He was honest and conducted all city business with the highest level of integrity. Al did not have a pile of money in his office, because he had a money tree that he's leaving, I believe, but he would always take out the calculator from his shirt pocket and work with city staff, city commissioners, and the public to achieve the goals of our community. Whereas Al has been a vital member of the community of Yankton for over 30 years, he first came to the community to manage Sunshine Foods Grocery Store. As a manager of the store, he oversaw a major upgrade and relocation to a new state-of-the-art facility. While working for the private sector, Al served on the Yankton Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. His service on the Chamber Board including, included attaining the distinguished honor of being elected board president. During Al's term as president, the community accomplished one of its largest collaborative efforts, the construction of Yankton High School and the Summit Activities Center. As a Chamber Board President, he had a major positive impact on getting the project underway. And whereas Al is a graduate of Sioux Falls, Washington High School, he attended Sioux Falls College, now the University of Sioux Falls, for two years, and then transferred to the University of South Dakota, graduating with a business administration degree. Al worked various jobs during college to pay for his own education. Al married his wife Jane in 1976. They lived in Hurley while Jane was a student at Augustana College, which I guess, to be fair, is now Augustana University. As Al continued to work at various places, including a part-time gig at Sunshine Foods in Yankton, Al then transferred to a Sioux Falls Sunshine store for a short time in 1977 or 1978. Guess we weren't sure on which year, but-- Yeah, Yankton nearly lost Al and Jane forever to a job opportunity in Rochester, Minnesota, in 1979. Just days before they were to leave for Minnesota, Al was offered an opportunity to return to Yankton as the manager of Sunshine Foods. To the benefit of the Yankton community, he accepted the position. In 1998, at the urging of a local politician, Al applied for the position of finance officer for the City of Yankton. The move would prove beneficial to the city and his family. While he still works long hours, he is free most evenings, weekends, and holidays to spend with his family. Whereas Al and Jane are parents to three children. Son Tom and his wife Shannon live here in Yankton with their three children, Abby, Hunter, and Connor. Daughter Laura and her husband Michael Klug live in Omaha with their three children, Noah, Amelia, and Ellie. Son Dan and his wife Megan also live in Yankton with their three children, with their children, I said three, I believe there's four names here, sorry about that, with their children, Molly, Evelyn, Elena, and Thea. Jane stays at home and provides grandma daycare. Most days, Al spends his lunch break rocking one or more of the grandchildren to sleep for their afternoon nap, or being the bus driver and picking up the older children from school. Truly a man with a large heart and a soft spot. Now therefore, I, Stephanie Mosher, Mayor of the City of Yankton, along with my fellow members of the City Commission, City Manager Amy Leon, City Attorney Ross Denherter, and all of the city employees before and current, do hereby declare with deep gratitude-- our thanks to Alvin, didn't even know that was your real name, Al Varick, for the loyal and faithful service he has given to the City of Yankton by means of this proclamation dated February 12th, 2024.
You guys, I'll get in here a little bit, we'll get the picture, or some of you want to come around. Full of surprises tonight. I was going to say, you want to stand there? Make sure you can see, oh, wow. All right. Family here, too. Family, come on up. I got the commissioners moving. You guys come on up, gather in the middle, squeeze up. We're even dressed up. We've got to be dapper for grandpa. Are we doing okay?
All right, all these kids ought to pretend like they're happy. Or maybe that's why they're not smiling.
How does it suffer, Sam?
All right, we're not done yet. So if you can turn your attention over to the podium, I believe City Manager Leon has a presentation as well.
Yes.
And then we're going to turn it over to Al.
Yeah, before I let Al talk, I don't think a lot of people noticed, but a while ago, we changed the city seal here on front of the dais. So we updated our seal, got that changed, and I was like, what are we doing with the old seal? So we had an idea, and we know that Al likes to enjoy a cup of coffee in the morning, and maybe something else in the evening, but we thought, how fitting if we could do something for Al, and he could think of us while we're all going to work, or while we're all going home from work, or maybe while he's reading a book, or hanging out with one of his grandkids, he can set something down on. So we took the city seal, and Greg Homestead, who's very talented with a lot of things, but he helped us make a little end table for Al. So I'll just, yeah, thanks, Commissioner Villanueva. Commissioner Villanueva will hang, hold it up there. So Al, you can set your beverage of choice there down while you're watching the City Commission meeting. Because I know you won't want to miss any commission meeting. So that's the commission and the staff's gift to you, since you wouldn't let us do anything for you. So I hope you enjoy that. Before we let you talk, I will just say, you know, I can speak on behalf of all of us. Al, you're a mentor and a friend. We call you Uncle Al. We call you the Godfather. We call you the Silver Fox. But you're the guy that knows stuff, and you're the guy that keeps us calm, and you're the guy that says, hey, don't fall on a sword unless you're sure it's sharp enough to fall on, you know? Meaning, unless it really matters, we can work it out as a community. I personally really appreciate all you've taught me, and I think that the community was willing to take a chance on me and a lot of our department heads, because they knew that we were guided by your strong and steady hand. You're like a father or grandpa to a lot of us. And so we'll give you back to your real family, but we hope you're not a stranger at the city, because you mean that much to us. So, thank you.
Well, and, are you going to stand there?
No, he's got to go to have a speech, speech time. Well, we purposely did it as a surprise, Al, so that you didn't have time to prepare 20 pages of notes. Or jokes. I think one of your grandsons shops at the same place that Ross does, too.
I think so.
Looking pretty like a future city attorney there.
Well, behind me is, excuse me, but, give me a minute here. It's the hay fever really sets in this time of the year. But this is the reason why I'm still here, and why I've enjoyed my stay in Yankton, because of the blessings. And now I hope to have a lot more time to spend with them. And I've already gotten honey-do lists from them, more than Jane. And Laura, this explains why I haven't gotten a text, you haven't left home yet. She left at about 3:15, and I haven't gotten the text, haven't gotten the text. She didn't go home. Literally, all I can say is thank you to the community, too, because for 50 years now, you've really supported me, and I'm glad that I've been able to give back some to you, too. I, my political filter is a little less as I age, so I'll be real careful. But I will say that, you know, I haven't played basketball for about four years now, since before COVID. And while I was playing before COVID, I was a little careful, but I still gave an elbow once in a while to a boss. And all I got to tell him now is, I warned you. I don't have to have that filter anymore. You think the elbows were bad before. Again, thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
Al, I guess we only have one other thing to say. And usually, I know when we had Deputy Chief Nichols' retirement, they could page that out and tell folks that you're no longer on duty. We don't have that in place tonight, but you do have me. Sir, thank you for your service to the City of Yankton. You're dismissed. Go enjoy your family. I mean that, do not stick around tonight. You go enjoy them. We got them together to celebrate you, so enjoy.
I will do that, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we might have said goodbye to him tonight as he's leaving, but he is with us until February 23rd. So any city employees or citizens need anything of Al here, we still do have a couple weeks before he's officially gone, but like I said, tonight was his last meeting. So again, our thanks to Al for all the years of service. With that, then, I would open it up, if there is anybody here from the public that wants to address the commission on something not on the agenda tonight. Yeah, Colleen, if you could state your name, and, yep?
Colleen Ackland, 2607 Abbott Drive. Commissioners, City Manager, Mayor, or Mayor, I just wanted to address you, and I wanted to applaud the City Manager Leon and Chief Foot for their efforts in taking lead in promoting the texting, no texting and driving. I don't know if you were aware, but we did have a bill that went to the House Bill 1107, and of course, it was killed in the Transportation Committee. We worked hard on it, we're not done, we're going back next year. We've already started working on that. I was a little taken back in committee, because it, there was no opponents against it, but yet it didn't pass the committee. And it was ironic, because one of the legislators was concerned that it was going to affect her eating a Big Mac while she was driving, because that might be construed as distracted driving. And then there was another one that was mentioned about if he was going to be able to video conference while he was driving. And I was really hurt by that, because that's really what we were there for, is, you know, it's not, and not that I want to take that away, you know, I don't want to take away people's Big Macs and their french fries while they're driving, but I do want that cell phone to be hands-free, and that's what we were all about. We were also wanting it to be a primary offense and not a secondary. And we still will be fighting for that. So, but I do applaud them for helping me. There was many emails back and forth throughout the last year, and I appreciate all of their input, and we are going to move forward and try and get this passed next year. So thank you.
Great, thanks, Colleen, thanks for your work on that. Anybody else? Tom, did I see you raise your hand? Okay. Hang on, Dave's coming to you with the microphone.
If the, is this on? I never know. If the commission will give me some extra seconds before I go into what I'm going to say. I wanted to say, I wish Al would have been here for me to say this, but he went out the door before I could. I worked with him before most of you were on this board and since, and he was always a person who, from the first campaign I ever ran, he always helped me out every chance he could. He never said, oh, Tom is such a whatever you want to call it. He was always helpful, and this is from a citizen's standpoint. He never once told me, I don't want to talk to you. He never said, I don't want to help you. And I just wish he would have been here right out the door for me to say, thank you for that, because that was from the first campaign I ever ran since. And now I'd like to say to you that tonight, I am circulating a petition for Yankton County Treasure and a petition for the City Commission, and anybody who would like to sign it before they go out the door is welcome to do it. I will be here until most of the crowd leaves, in case anybody wants to sign it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lisa, this brings up a good point, and I'm going to put you on the spot here, but I'm sure you have this all memorized. Can you remind the citizens, I know we're in the middle of folks being able to pull petitions, can you just kind of remind everybody the dates that they can pull petitions, the date they have to have it back, maybe how many signatures they need to get on the ballot, anything like that? Anything you can give us as a reminder here?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Mosher. The petitions are due February 23rd at 5:00 PM at City Hall. Petitions can be taken out at City Hall or retrieved also online from the South Dakota Secretary of State's website. They need 50 signatures, and those signatures must be registered voters within the City of Yankton limits.
And I believe unless anything's changed, because there's three open positions, people can only sign three total, correct?
That's correct, only three petitions, only three signatures is allowed if we receive a fourth-- if you sign four petitions, our office is going to catch that, and that fourth petition is not going to count. So just bear in mind, we do, we are required now by state law to look up every single signer and make sure everybody is a registered voter. Another thing I'd like to point out, too, is we do currently have two candidates already, so we need at least two more, four, in order to have an election. So we need at least two more, four, in order to have an election.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Thank you for going through that. And I know the election will come up April. I don't have that committed to memory. Do you? April 8th, did you say?
It's going to be April 9th.
April 9th. All right. And then do we know when absentee voting will start? Not absentee, but they can vote?
Yes, I believe absentee voting begins March 27th. It's about 15 days before the election day.
Perfect. Not bad. I put her on the spot and she got through all of that. Thank you for clarifying all that. I know that's up. I just want to make sure everybody knows because there's three open positions, you can sign three, and so once you've done that, if you have already, just to be aware of that. We don't want anybody getting anything thrown out if they don't do it right. So, all right. Is there anybody else that wants to appear in front of the commission tonight on something not on the agenda? All right. Not seeing any other movement, then we will move to the consent agenda. Number one is setting the date of February 26, 2024 at 6:00 PM here in the city chambers for our next work session of the Yankton City Commission. I know City Manager Leon, did you, I was probably more worried about reading Al's thing. I don't think you covered it, and you kind of want to update as I'm reading it here?
Correct. I don't have a topic yet. I will have more information probably by the end of the week as to whether or not the topic I was thinking about will be set or not. And if not, we can, you know, cancel the work session if need be, or we can come up with another item to talk about. What I don't want to do is not have it ready to go in case we need it. So I'll be in communication with you all about that.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Number two is consideration of memorandum 24-29 recommending approval of the application for Market at the Meridian for a transient merchant license, May 4th through October 26, 2024, for the farmer's market, which will take place every Saturday morning from May 4th, 2024 through October 26, 2024, at the city parking lot located at the north corner of Second Street and Douglas Street. Number three is to establish February 26, 2024 as the date for a public hearing for a special on-sale malt beverage retailer's license and a special on-sale wine retailer's license for one day, April 10th, 2024, from Mount Marty University, for Fresh Ideas at 1105 West 8th Street. And number four is to establish February 26, 2024 as the date for a public hearing for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, from Charles Rezak, doing business as Chuck Stop LLC at 800 Summit Street. What is your pleasure?
Move the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Anybody abstaining? All right. Moving on to old business, then. Number one is consideration of memorandum 24-33, the second reading and a public hearing of ordinance 1078 supplement number one to ordinance 1074, the 2024 annual appropriation ordinance. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number two under old business is consideration of memorandum 24-25 regarding the request for a special on-sale malt beverage retailer's license and a special on-sale wine retailer's license for one day, February 24, 2024, from the center, Chris Thury, Executive Director at 900 Whiting Drive. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. And number three under old business is consideration of memorandum 24-26 regarding the request for a special on-sale liquor license for one day, February 14th, 2024, from Fussworks LLC, doing business as the 1872 Saloon, Levy Street Steakhouse at 100 Douglas, Suite 101. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to new business, number one is consideration of memorandum 24-23 recommending the approval of the Parks Advisory Board's recommendation to remove the dangerous cottonwood trees according to the schedule in the attached assessment, and for staff to plant two trees in our public spaces for each of the cottonwood trees removed. It is further recommended that the city provide the unbudgeted expense of removing tree number 11 in the 2024, in 2024, and budget accordingly for future tree removal. I'm going to have Amy walk us through, one, I guess, kind of why this goes through the Parks Advisory Board, why this is being proposed, and what's happening here before I ask for the pleasure of the commission.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So prior to Christmas, around that time, two of our parks employees, Chris Bornitz and Lisa Corton came to me and they said, we need to talk to you about trees. And I said, I don't want to talk about trees. I have post-traumatic tree discussions. I don't want to talk about trees, but they said, we need to talk to you about trees. There's a couple of cottonwood trees that we need to talk about. They're really getting to the point of being dangerous. And they said, you know, they're in public spaces, they're large, they're old, they need to come down. How do you want us to proceed? And I said, well, first of all, let me, you know, get some information on what trees you're talking about. And I said, could you do a little inventory for me? You know, estimated age, provide some type of ranking for their health, and give some explanation about the, what makes them unhealthy or dangerous. And they did just that. So you do have that in your packet, and that's available for the public to look at. They took a look at some of the trees in our public spaces, and they ranked them sort of from most dangerous, what they felt was most dangerous, to least, I guess, even though they're all considered dangerous, giving them a scale as a low risk, moderate risk, or high risk. So what they told me is not only do these come down, need to come down, but they were not comfortable taking them down. We work with our street department when we take down trees. However, even in talking with the street shop, they said, you know, when a tree's that old and that large, if there's, if it's rotten, if it's cracked, there's no guarantee on how it might fall. We just don't have the equipment or, you know, know enough about how to remove these types of trees. Some of these trees, if you look at the photos of them, their branches are as big as normal-sized trees. So in the analysis there, in the inventory, it talks about trees that have the witch's brooms, what kind of look like, you know, the palm of your hand and the large, the large trunk there. You can see some rotted spaces. So they rank those trees from worst condition to maybe least condition. Concerns really are about the tree falling in the public right-of-way, falling in the public space, et cetera. And so, you know, once I feel that the staff comes to me and identifies something that's a danger to the public, we've got to do something about it, whether it's comfortable to talk about or not. So I thought, you know, let's talk with the tree board and see what their input is. So the city of Yankton does have a tree board. It's the Parks Advisory Board. They can give recommendations about planting trees, provide advice on trees. That's, you know, their role. We had to put together a tree board to be a Tree City USA. And so you can see there, Section 2433 talks about what they do and how they move forward. So we provided that same inventory to the tree, to the tree board slash Parks Advisory Board, and I came and presented to them in January and talked to them about the situation. And they agreed that these trees were dangerous and did need to be removed, although we're sensitive to the fact that, you know, we want to continue to plant trees in our public spaces. And so the recommendation was made that we do go ahead and remove all the trees on, according to the schedule that you have in the inventory, and it's one a year, with the understanding that they would be replaced with two additional trees planted by our Parks Department, not necessarily in the same park, but in a public space, not necessarily cottonwoods. We know cottonwoods are soft trees, and so perhaps with maybe various different types of trees. And then to hire out the removal of those trees. So in this motion, commissioners, is to budget for the removal of tree number 11, we're calling R11, it's in Riverside Park, because it is not provided for currently in the budget. And then moving forward, we would have, we would make a budget line item or consideration in the Parks Department budget to hire clients to help us remove these. The estimate is 5,000 to 7,000. I, you know, we don't know exactly. I think part of it depends upon what they get into and how, how much equipment, how dangerous it is, but we would, you know, budget on the high side, and some I'm sure will be closer to seven and some perhaps not. So that is what we're proposing this evening. If you have questions about sort of our overall tree planting program and how we work with the public on trees, Todd Larson is here and he can give some more information. But we are recommending that in this case, these are dangerous trees. We just don't want to be in a situation where we would have a tree fall on, you know, somebody's property or their car or, you know, something like that. So trying to look out for the safety of the public on this one.
Thanks for walking us through that, Amy, because I know a lot, one, most people didn't know we had a tree board and kind of what goes behind that. I know the other thing, when we were visiting with the media on Friday, I kind of said, how come we settled at planting two trees for everyone that we remove, which I really, really appreciate? And that was, again, tied to the Tree City designation. So I applaud the city staff and the tree board for working through all of this to do what's right for our community, to keep them safe, but yet keep us in the designation of continuing to be a Tree City. With that, are there questions from the commission that you need clarification on prior to telling me what the pleasure of the commission is? If not, what is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved.
Second. Now that we do have an official motion and a second, is there anybody on the commission?
I think now would be an opportune time if we could review the city's overall tree planting program, since this will probably lead to some of those questions in the public. So if Todd could help us through that, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Commission. So 2023 saw the city of Yankton have our 40th year designated as Tree City USA. There's an application process each year that our urban forester goes through and does the calculations and puts all the data in and sends in the application. There's four standards to meet to become a Tree City USA. First one's maintaining a tree board or a department. And obviously, we have the Park Advisory Board to be our tree board, and we have a Parks Department that oversees urban forestry. Second one is having a community tree ordinance, and we have that in place. A lot of it gets referred back to when we're dealing with street right-of-way trees, and I'll touch on that in a minute. Spending at least $2 per capita on urban forestry. So again, it looks at our overall budget, what our population is, and we calculate that out on what we're planting, what we're taking down, what we're using to maintain, mulch trees, trimmed trees, all of those type of things. And then the fourth one is that we celebrate Arbor Day every day, every year. So we have those four stipulations that we have to meet, and again, we've done that for 40 straight years now. A thriving urban forest offers many advantages to the communities, and we realize that. It promotes healthy communities by filtering the air we breathe, by removing dust and other particles. It moderates the climate, conserves water, provides vital habitat for wildlife, even in town, reduces the heat island effect in urban areas caused by pavement, asphalt and buildings, increases property values and reduces energy use of buildings around it, and then adds to the beauty of our homes and our neighborhoods. So Stan Hofert, who was the urban forester when I came to town, was involved with Tree City USA. As he retired, now Lisa Corton, who has a written test to complete, and then she will become a certified arborist through the International Society, and I don't know if I'm going to say this word right, Arbi culture. It's not the International Society of Arborists, it's the International Society of Arbia Culture. So if I'm saying that wrong, forgive me. So we have those two to thank for staying on top of all this data and planting trees and those things. And again, over the past five years, we have averaged planting 72 trees a year. We had a high of 101 trees in a year, and we've been as low as 45. But normally through the years, we're in that 60 to 70 tree range of trees we plant every year. And again, I'll be the first one to say, we could always plant more trees, but again, our department is limited by time and people power. Unfortunately, the majority of the trees we plant are in spaces that are not irrigated. We have some parks that are irrigated, some part of Fox Run Golf Course is irrigated, but our trail system, there's a lot of ground out at Fox Run Golf Course that's not irrigated. We have, do have some parks that aren't irrigated. We have other right-of-way spaces we maintain, oddball pieces here and there that are not irrigated. So it takes time, effort, and money every year to water those trees for the first two years when we plant them. So when you think about 72 trees being planted every year, that's a lot of watering, especially if you think about our climate and what we've gone through with, if you have irrigation on your own lawns and you're trying to keep grass alive, let alone trees, we spend a lot of time, money and effort on keeping trees alive. 2018, we worked with the city commission and our Park Advisory Board. We created an ash tree plan. Again, the ash bore was detected just north of Sioux Falls. It has now migrated south down into the Dakota Dunes area. So we're still a few years away. There's no reason for people to worry about ash trees and think that they need to start treating them with chemicals. We're not to that point yet. But in 2018, we created an ash tree removal plan. Again, at that time, we had about 800 ash trees we had identified across Fox Run Golf Course, the trails, right-of-ways, parks. And so if that ash bore would show up, you have two to three years to take down trees. Well, taking down 800 trees in a two to three-year period, what is not going to be possible. So that's where the plan came from. We've been working on it. Our data for the ash, ash tree removals, 27, that winter of 2017 into 2018, we took down 29 ash trees. 2018 to 2019, we took down 202 ash trees. 219 to 220, we took down 154. 20 to 21, we took down 193. 21 to 22, we took down about 143. And 22 to 23, we took down about 39. So 760 ash trees have been removed. We have about 260 left. So we're slowly working through our plan. We have 20 homeowners that have contacted us and want to, as we've contacted them about taking down trees, we put a knocker on the door. We inform people what's going on. We have 20 homeowners that want to treat their right-of-way trees. Every two years, they'll chemically be treating it and showing us that they are treating it. Once they stop treating it and they tell us they're stopped treating it, then it's going to have to go on to the removal plan. But that's what we're doing with the right-of-way, right-of-way parks, trails, Fox Run Golf Course, cemetery, ash trees. When we got into 2018 and got into that plan, we did a little bit of research, and there are some towns that were providing money for people to plant trees back in right-of-ways. So then, at that time, we created a right-of-way tree planting reimbursement program. So over the past five years, the number of trees that we, you, city commission, we as a budget, city budget, have been able to help people reimburse them for not 100%, but up to 75% of trees that they're planting in their right-of-ways. And again, they go through the process of filling out an application, talking with Lisa, making sure we're picking the right trees for those right-of-ways, so there's no overhead power lines, we're not getting a tree that's going to be too big for the space, depending on what else is around it. So they work with Lisa on that. But in 2019, there were seven trees planted in the right-of-way using that program, 2027 trees, 2021, eight trees, 2022, four trees, and 2023, seven trees. So through the years, we have been able to help people plant right-of-way trees and provide them some financial reimbursement on that. The other thing tonight to talk about is I'm proud to announce, because I don't think that you've seen anything in the newspaper yet, the state hasn't made any announcement, but Lisa was able to work through the state forester, and we've secured a $50,000 grant to inventory all of our street trees, parks trees, trail trees, cemetery trees, Fox Run Golf Course trees, any city property that we maintain, we're going to inventory them, get it into a digital database. The best part about the $50,000 grant, it does not require any matching funds. So it's $50,000 that we're going to be able to use to do that. So it's $50,000 that we're going to be able to use to do that. And we have a year and a half, so starting May 1st until 12/31 of 2026 to get that done. So we have some software in place. We've been trying to do some stuff on our own with our staff. Lisa's been trying to work with volunteers in town to help with that tree identification process, but that gets a little bit tough with volunteers and we got to know what the bark looks like and what the tree lift, what the tree leaves look like. And so we're excited to get that $50,000 grant. I think that was about everything I needed to talk about.
Todd, I'll also just add, I know you know this, but for the Commission and the public's benefit, there were thousands of trees, in fact, tens of thousands planted associated with the Marn Creek Bank Stabilization Project. Now, some of those, since we did have a hot summer, won't make it. But, you know, we did plant through that contract and some, some of that landscaping will, will be revisited as, as we look at the warranty on that project. Also, many people participate in the tree planting program to honor a loved one. So we also have a lot of people who, as opposed to doing a contribution or, or sending flowers to a service or something, they'll contact the Parks Department and plant a tree in memory of someone and there's a plaque there. And so we have a lot of folks who can point to a tree and say, oh, that's the tree that was planted, you know, on behalf of my loved one. And so that's kind of a neat program as well and not everybody knows about that. So that's a fun thing that the Parks Department does as well.
So will the ash tree right-of-way replacement program, will that continue for the foreseeable future or will that be sunsetted?
Yes, no, I would assume it's going to continue until a City Commission decides that we don't want to have that one line item to appropriate funds for planting trees in the right-of-way.
Todd, how do you determine where, where trees are, are to be planted? And when you determine where and what type of tree, how do you specify? I know I've seen some trees that are planted that, that aren't super large, maybe just a little bit bigger than, than your thumb diameter. Are there instances where maybe spading some trees in and getting a little bit larger growth tree might be a quicker way to potentially regain some shade or, or just have a tree do better?
Yeah, I, tree spading, obviously you can bring in a bigger tree and get shade faster because you're going to get a tree that's probably 10 to 15 years old versus the little one and a half inch to two-inch diameter tree. That's going to take time. The problem is with tree spading, if you've got an open park area, again, normally we've got mature trees coming down, so we have time to put, plant the smaller trees to get shade to where we need to go. If you're a private property owner, you might be limited to where you can spade trees in based on garage buildings, houses, other trees, things like that. We always are looking at how close other trees are, how close to buildings, sidewalks, driveways, blocking views. Again, when you think about a park or green space, trail space, think of a evergreen tree, pine tree, spruce tree, has branches all the way to the ground, blocks views through a park if a policeman's driving by, what have you. Deciduous tree, shade trees, we can trim those up. You can get the clear, you still have the shade, you still have the greenery, but you can look through if you're on a sidewalk, you can see what's in the park, what's going on, cars driving by, those type of things. And then Lisa's really been focused on trying to diversify what trees we do have in town. That's where the right, the inventory comes into, into play so much. So again, it's looking at the space, what size of tree we need, what, what we're trying to shade, and then diversifying species. Again, everybody loves maple trees because you can get the colors, the oranges and the reds in the fall. But there is some concern out there now that after the ash trees that replace the elm trees, so now we're on our second generation of trees that are getting wiped out by one thing, there's concern that maple could be the next one that comes down the line. Nothing's out there yet, but that could be. So looking at different trees, native trees and all of those different type of things, soil that you have, access to irrigation, again, a hardwood tree versus a fast-growing softwood tree. Again, if you think ash trees, they do, they, they are hardwood, but they're not like an oak. So they are susceptible to wind damage when we have storms come through, willows, aspens, quaking aspens, those type of things, wind damage. So again, it's looking at a lot of different variables on, on where you're planting them, on what property. But Lisa, again, that's what she kind of looks at and talks to with our public, let alone our own staff, on, on looking at what we, what we want, what's already around there and finding some different trees to plant in that area.
And so great segue to my next question. So if, if the public does have a question about, hey, I'd like to plant a tree in my backyard, what do you suggest? Can they call then and get some information from, from you or from?
You bet. They can always start with our website. So if they go to the City of Yankton website under the Parks Department, they can find over, if they, again, we have the tabs up top, but then we also have the menus on the side. And when you get into the Parks Department, one of the menus on the side is urban forestry. And you can click on that and you will find information on the Emerald Ash Bore Plan that the city has, but you'll also find information from the State Forestry Department about ash trees. And then you can even start to find information about pine, the pine beetle and pine wilt and all different things that are going on, maybe not even just East River, but more West River with the pine stuff. But we have that going on a little bit with the pine rust here on this side of the, side of the state. But that's all on our city website. Then you can also find information about different trees that we would recommend or on a list that we would give you physically, but you can find it online. Talks about small trees, medium trees, large trees. It'll tell you what the span is going to be, if it's going to get 20 feet wide, 30 feet wide, 40 feet wide, 40 feet tall, 60 feet tall, 80 feet tall. So that way you could do a little bit on your own, knowing how far away you are from your garage or your house, how tall you want it. Again, all of those things can be found on our website, a lot of that information. But yep, then Lisa's phone number is on there and they can call and talk with Lisa and she can give some recommendations.
Great information. Thanks, Todd.
Same thing, I should say, going back to that tree right-of-way, tree ordinance, again, just so everybody's on the same page, our tree ordinance says, people can plant trees in the right-of-way. We can give them information. As long as the tree is healthy, comes trimming, or if something does come down in the wind, but the tree for the most part is intact and can still stay in place, trimming and maintenance is up to the adjoining property owner. Once the tree becomes dead, diseased or hazardous, and that's when the phone calls will start to come to us about, can Lisa come out and take a look at this tree by my driveway? This last windstorm that came through, major branch came down, I see a crack all the way down the trunk, lightning struck it, so now we've got some, some burnt out area of the tree, those type of things. So she'll come out and look at it and decide whether it's dead, diseased or hazardous. And then it gets into, is it newly dead, damaged, still healthy, still solid? It can make it till the winter, till we can take it down with our crews? Or no, yep, that's bad enough damage. You park cars out here, it's a narrow street, it's close to a house with a porch or garage. Yeah, we need to get somebody out here and take it down. So once a tree is dead, diseased or hazardous, then we, the city, have to take it down and remove the stump. So again, through the years, people have said, we have this tree in my front yard and it's dirty and it drops a lot of stuff. Can you come out and look at it? Yes, it does do all those things, still a healthy tree, we wouldn't take it down. You as the property owner adjoining, if you don't like it and you want to take it down, that would be at your expense. So sometimes people pay for that because they get tired of that dirty damp tree that's dropping stuff all the time. That's why we have the right-of-way replacement program, so they can replace it with something else that will be better. But once it's dead or diseased or hazardous, then we get more involved with the, the trees and taking them down and getting rid of stumps.
I've got a question for Ross. Now that we have this list where we've identified several of these trees, and we're taking down one a year, it sounds like, are we, if something, one of the trees would fall on property, hurt someone, whatever, are we more exposed now that we have this list than we would be if it just happened to happen?
Not necessarily, because the, the, the legal liability is based on taking reasonable care to make sure that it's reasonably pruned and safe. So if, if it was imminently in danger of falling, waiting four years would be irresponsible for us. But if, you know, we're rating them based on their current condition and they're still being, correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, but they're still being tended to in the meantime, the same way we tend to the other trees.
Again, if you think about, especially the cottonwoods, again, there's a lot of attachment to them. If they're along the river, eagles are making their nests in them, they're an old tree. People planted them when they homesteaded, so there's a lot of attachment to cottonwood trees. But again, river, riverboat days down in Riverside Park, every year we go through and treat, and we got more than just cottonwoods and that trees, but we trim those up. And again, we're always worried about that and everybody knows it can happen, that windstorm that comes through around riverboat days and branches dropping. Again, if any of you are familiar with Iowa and RagBride, the bicycle ride across Iowa, there's been multiple years where somebody's been killed in a park or a schoolyard setting where a tree in a windstorm has dropped a branch. They're, they're camping in areas that aren't necessarily a campground, but you see those type of things. We had a tree, a cottonwood tree in Trip Park that we had been watching and talked about taking down. It was leaning over one of the historic light poles. We never took it down. Sure enough, before we got to it, it fell down, damaged the historic light pole. That's about a $4,000 fix to get that replaced. So yes, we've, we've been monitoring, we do monitor them, we train, we trim them, we maintain them. But we're to the point now with that tree falling down on its own, some of the branches, we had a big branch go down on cottonwood last summer, at the end of summer. So we've been talking about the cottonwoods and now it was just, we felt it was time with what we're seeing, we've got to get a list, we've got to start taking them down, getting stuff replanted and do it over time. Because again, everybody, there's, there's going to be a lot of attachment to those cottonwood trees that have been there for decades, but.
Todd, I just really appreciate the work you and your team do to keep us in compliance with the Tree City USA requirements. I'm lucky enough to live in the middle of town where there are a lot of trees and they add a lot of richness and beauty to the community, as well as all the other important benefits that you mentioned. So I think it's an asset and it's why people care so much about what we're doing with our trees. And so then I appreciate the work you've done to identify trees that could be a problem and laid out a plan for us to, to deal with them. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments on the Commissioner questions?
I've, I've got something quick.
Yeah.
I rode around bicycle on Sunday, beautiful day. It was nice to be able to get out and, and take a look at, at all the trees. And I wanted to do it because I, I don't think it's a secret to anyone here that, that I've got an affection for, for the, the trees in the community and wanted to go around and, and do an inventory of, of each one. That was on the list and just kind of take a look at those. I could certainly see a number of them that, that, that the writing is on the wall. There were two that, if we could look at them, again, just to see if there's a possibility of, of trying to mitigate, it was, it would be Riverside III and Riverside IV. I, I very much appreciate the work that, you know, Lisa and Chris and, and Todd that you do. I just, I have, I have, you know, my own viewpoints and, and trying to, trying to look at those things and, and try to be honest with, with myself and with what I'm seeing and, and could you, could you explain to me, so witch's broom? So my understanding of witch's broom is that it's a clump of branches that are out on the ends of branches? I see that being listed on, on a number of, number of things. And I, I am not an arborist by, by any means, but you know, have, like I said, I, I have my own attachments to say. So Todd, can you speak to that at all? I know that that's not necessarily your field of expertise also.
Yeah, no, I would, Lisa, if there's serious questions about a tree, it'd be, Lisa would need to sit down and meet onsite or whatever the case would be to look at a tree and go over the different aspects of why she would think it would need to come down. That would be for Lisa, not me.
Sure. But these two trees are not scheduled for, for this year, this three and, three and four. So we could possibly take a look at them. Also, it's the expense of taking those, taking those trees down. Three is a, is a smaller, smaller tree. It does have a large can of levered branch that goes out over the trail and I understand the liability of that, but I'm also wondering if some of that can be, can be trimmed off and still allow for that tree to, to survive? And from the size of it, it looks like that's something that we could possibly do in-house instead of, instead of hiring it out. The other tree that I saw was the number four, that's between power line and another large cottonwood. And I, I don't know, I'm just trying to, trying to see the reason, but also know that I'm not trained. So I'm just, if we could just look at it again, I would, I would appreciate it.
I do see in the packet, I believe one is scheduled for 2026 and the other one for 2028. So I do think we have time to investigate that and look again. Other questions from the Commission? Yep, Ross?
Just to clarify too, every once in a while, my office will get calls by people who wish to remove trees that they, for whatever reason, don't like. Just a reminder, I don't want any of us to accidentally give the impression, if there is a, a street tree between the, you know, within the right-of-way, between the sidewalk and, and the street, those cannot be removed without permission from the city too. So just want to make sure that we didn't hear the wrong message. You can just run out and chop it down if you don't like it.
Thank you for clarifying that. Anybody else up here have any questions or comments? Anybody in the public want to address the Commission? All right, seeing no movement, roll call.
Minor?
Aye.
Shram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Under new business, two and three are pretty much tied together. So just to clarify for the public, the City Commission has three employees that report directly to the City Commission, the City Manager, the City Finance Officer and the City Attorney. So a lot of times when we talk, some of you might be wondering why their specific salaries are in front of us tonight. Excuse me, not the Commission probably, but maybe members of the public. Because they report to the Commission, the Commission meets with them and discusses the raises for those three positions. Two of them are in front of the Commission tonight for discussion because, if you just recall, about an hour ago, we did a recognition of Al, who is the retiring City Finance Officer, at a previous meeting. It was agreed upon by the Commission to promote Lisa Yardley to the City Finance Officer position. So that was already on a former agenda and the salary according to that was set in that agenda and approved by the City Commission meeting at that time. So wanted to clarify that as we move into two and three. Also want to clarify for the public, we do meet with all of these individuals. So they, they, they fill out kind of their own appraisal of their job, I guess, if you want to call it that and share their thoughts. The Commission is all asked to share their thoughts. Then my thanks to Commissioner Shram, who worked with me to do the evaluation of the two employees. And while we can't discuss what happened in it, executive session then is time for the rest of the Commission to meet with the city, the city or the employees that report directly to the Commission. So in front of you tonight is the recommendation of, of the salary and raise moving forward for both then the City Manager and the City Attorney. If approved tonight, would be retroactive back to January 1. So I know we use a little bit of time to go through that process. It is not at the penalty of the employees that we take a little bit longer than we do with the other city employees that are in the union and non-union employees to go through. So just kind of wanted to clarify all of that as we go into two and three and felt appropriate so that we don't have to take time to do that in front of two and then in front of three. So with that then, I want to bring those forward tonight. Number two is consideration of memorandum 24-27 and Resolution 24-05 recommending an adjustment to the salary of City Manager. That adjustment then would equal $152,112. What is the pleasure of the Commission?
So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other Commission discussion? Anybody in the public?
Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number three then, under new businesses, consideration of memorandum 24-28 and resolution 24-06 recommending an adjustment to the salary of city attorney. That adjustment then would be $75,000. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. I do want to thank, take a brief second to thank Ross, Amy and Lisa for the outstanding job she's been providing the commission so far as she's taken over. We're very fortunate in our community to have these three individuals serving our community. They're very knowledgeable. They listen. They provide great advice and put in a lot of hours doing the job that they love on behalf of the city and with the commission. So thank you for the excellent job that the three of you are providing us and keep it up. All right, moving on to number four is consideration memorandum 24-31 recommending the adoption of resolution 24-07 authorizing the sale or disposal of surplus property. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. I might have Chief Foot come to the microphone here for this next one. I don't know if folks are going to want his input on that, but save a couple of seconds. But it is consideration of memorandum 24-32 recommending authorization for the Yankton Police Department's application for Homeland Security funding. And if successful, the subsequent purchase of four vigilant license plate reader, quick deploy cameras, and approve resolution 24-08. Before I ask for the pleasure of the commission, I've asked Amy and then obviously had Chief Foot come forward. We'll start with Amy, but I thought we had some good discussion on this when we met with the media on Friday. So I think it's worth warranting what all this is, why it's important, and maybe some examples of what it can do.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and the public. The YPD and the county sheriff's office apply for Homeland Security grants in alternating years. And so this year is the Yankton Police Department's year to apply. So Chief Foot and I have visited and he would like to apply for funding through Homeland Security in order to purchase the vigilant license plate readers, what we call LPRs. And those readers have already been proven in our state valuable for law enforcement. So things like preventing crime and crime detection, enhancing officer safety, investigating, you know, things such as stolen cars or when there is, for example, a national amber alert. All those things can be determined by the license plate reader cameras. They are not speed cameras, not that any of us would speed over the bridges or anything like that. But they're not used to, you know, take a picture of your car and send you a speeding ticket. They're intended for crime prevention. And it was interesting because I would say Chief Foot and I had a robust conversation about cameras and about privacy because this conversation should be one that is all being had. You know, you can't be totally safe and totally private or totally safe and totally free at the same time. You give up some of those things and finding that balance is important in any community. And so, you know, we talked about that and I had a really nice conversation with Chief. And I think that based on the fact that these have been proven already in our state and they have been effective in apprehending some pretty significant criminals. You know, if we're able to do that by utilizing these, if we do receive the grant, it's probably worth our while. So I trust the chief and his recommendation and he probably has some more details and more examples of application for the cameras.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the commission and city manager Leon. Yeah, these things have been proven throughout the state. They kind of started in Madison. They've branched out in different areas, but they have so many different uses, not only in detecting criminals that maybe enter our community or our state and keeping us safe, but they can also be used for investigative purposes. Something to go back on if we have high-profile crimes, armed robberies, even just your normal theft. If we have a suspect vehicle, even without a license plate, we'd be able to maybe narrow it down to somebody. They can also be quick deployed. So if we have threats to specific individuals or specific buildings, we can quickly deploy them into an area to try to keep those safe. So many different uses. I see this as a crime prevention and criminal apprehension tool for the community and just to make it a safer place to live. It also will benefit the state. These ones that we look at right now that we're looking to purchase would be a partnership kind of with the state because that's what they will be looking for when they decide to deploy these as well.
It's funny you should mention Madison. I think I do recall one of our first-class mayors meeting, them talking about getting these cameras and the conversations that took place in the city tied to that and some things that kind of had to overcome. And so thank you for clarifying that. I know in our commission packet, and I think you kind of answered it, you talked about a couple of locations with the four cameras, basically the major highways, it looks like in the commission packet. But the other thing you mentioned in there is kind of the monitoring. Can you talk a little bit about, so does this require somebody that's going to be watching the system? Is it something that sends a message to you? Do you have to input? I'm trying to figure out how this all works. If it's somebody that's constantly monitoring it, does it go to dispatch? How does this work once we get the cameras?
So what would happen is that you get a hot list from the state. So that's all your wanted individuals or your stolen vehicles, that stuff. And you input it into your system. And then as one of those individuals' vehicles goes by that camera, it would alert an officer who has this system pulled up on their mobile data computer. And then they'd be able to go, hey, this car just went by this location in this direction and try to find that vehicle. They still have to confirm it. They don't just automatically stop the vehicle. They find the vehicle, they run the license plate. They do all their normal checks that they would do through dispatch and through our state NCIC system before they actually make a stop or a encounter with the individual in that vehicle.
Other questions from the commission? If not, what is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved.
Second. We do have a motion and a second. And understanding that we have a motion and a second, is there further commission discussion? Anybody in the public want to address the commission on this? Roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. So thanks for thinking of that and using dollars that you can apply for for a project that continues to keep our city safe. Number six is consideration of memorandum 24-30 recommending approval of the purchase of Christmas light decorations for Riverside Park from the BBB fund, with the understanding that the Optimists Club will contribute $5,000 towards the purchase, which would leave around $10,000 for the city share to come out of the BBB. I know we talk a lot here at the city, that a great way to do more with less is partnerships. So Amy, maybe again, kind of how did this all come about and thoughts there?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the commission and the public. Right after Christmas, the week after Christmas, I was approached in my office by one of the Optimists members and they said, what are you planning for Christmas lights next year? And typically we budget something for Christmas and for our decorations every other year. We did not budget anything in 2024. And I said, well, I haven't budgeted anything. And he said, you know, if the Optimists were interested in helping out with something for Christmas, would you be interested in approaching, you know, the commission about perhaps purchasing a few things? Well, yes, I was. So I talked with Les Kirchner and one of the requirements for being the head of the parks is you've got to love Christmas. And so that got inherited through Brian Frick to Les. And so Les and Chris Bornitz, they love Christmas. They love Christmas decorating. And Les informed me that if we are able to purchase something, you know, before the end of the month, I believe it is, we can get a large discount. And so I talked with Dave Spencer and some of the other Optimists about what would they be willing to do and what were they interested in. And they were interested in the purchase of an 18-foot lighted tree, deluxe Santa sleigh with eight tiny reindeer taking off that's animated, two elves, one's walking with a package and one with a box of lights. Depending upon the shipping cost, the Parks Department said, maybe we can even add in a 15-foot, an extra tree or maybe we can bump it up to the 20-foot, 21-foot tree. And I said, well, let's say 10,000 from the city's BBB and 5,000 from the Optimists and we can get as much as we can for that amount based on the shipping, et cetera, and working with the things that the Optimists would like to see in their Santa land, which has been a huge success and is growing in popularity. We do have a fund balance in the BBB. It's approximately somewhere around $477,000. This was not budgeted. No, it's not something we need, but it's, you know, Christmas decorations and I feel like if we can add it, and it's on sale. So I'm a proponent of this. I mean, the mayor said today, you know, we have a Santa's workshop and we don't have any elves. I mean, that was a really good point. So I feel like that's arguably a really good reason why we should do this. But of course, it's up to you. I'm pleased the Optimists have liked what we've done so far and how we've helped them. And so that's the story.
Thank you. Amy is really trying to stay on the nice list this year. So we'll see how that goes.
Yes, but it's, yes, I just, I like Christmas and Christmas decorating too and I get excited about it.
Yes, if Amy had her way, the water plant would have about $150,000 of lights on it.
That's still on the table if anyone ever wants to talk about it.
All right. With that, any commission discussion or questions? If not, what is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved.
Second. We do have a motion and a second. And now that we do, is there any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. I would take it that the whole city commission now will be on the nice list for a little bit anyway. All right. Number seven is consideration of memorandum 24-34 authorizing the city manager to amend the City of Yankton employee handbook, personnel policy manual, and direct the Human Resources Department to implement the Winter Traction Aid PPE program. If you looked in your commission packet, this is a program available that will allow us to keep our employees safe in the winter months by getting these really cool boot covers that gives grippers kind of on the bottom of the boots for city employees that spend a good chunk of their time out in the elements. With that, what is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this?
Appreciate the willingness to take part in this pilot program. It seems like a small thing, but falls, employee falls, it's a huge issue.
I tried getting some for myself, but evidently I'm not eligible. Anybody else on the commission? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number eight is consideration of memorandum 24-35 recommending the approval of the wastewater EDA project change order number two in the amount of $4,122, which is increasing the project cost total. And you can see in the commission packet and in the agenda to just a little over $9.9 million. And so still continuing to work on that. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number nine is consideration of memorandum 24-37 recommending the adoption of resolution 24-10 authorizing the destruction, trade, donation, or sale of surplus office furniture and water meters. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Minor?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. And number 10 is consideration of memorandum 24-36 recommending the adoption of resolution 24-09 authorizing the state to issue a work order to Banner Associates, Inc. to proceed with the inspection of the city-owned bridge structures. In your commission packet, you'll see that takes place every two years. And then I believe we get a list of, from them as far as what needs to be on the list to be inspected. You'll see there is a cost to that, but 80% of the cost is federal highway administration and 20% cost to the city. What is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Schram?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. That concludes our new business. We do not have, to my knowledge, any other agenda items under other business. So then with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting of February 12, 2024.
Mayor Moser, before we do that, could I potentially bring something up for other business?
Sure.
And the only reason I bring it up is because it was just brought up. Amy, are we serious about potentially thinking about adding some lights to the? Well, I bring this up only because I love to save money too. So if we're serious about that, and right now lights are 35% off, and typically the more you buy, the more you save when it comes to that stuff. And so I'm not going to sidetrack what we've already voted on, but if we're looking, if we're just going to speak to that company that's selling the lights and say, what if we bought other lights, maybe it's 50% off? I'm just saying, if we're seriously thinking about that, maybe it's time to at least talk about it.
Can I tell you how much I appreciate that comment, Commissioner Villanueva? It was a different company at the time we looked at this. I think it was prior to you being seated on the commission. It was lighting, lining the water plant, much like some of our banks have done. It was a commercial company. I believe it was $125,000 to $150,000 when we looked into it to do. And I, even though I really, really wanted to do it, wanted to bring it to the commission, I just thought, you know, that probably isn't a necessary expenditure. So I'm willing to entertain looking into that again, but I'm sure it didn't get less expensive. So now at the Holiday Sage and his team do in the entrance way some exterior lighting on their own and they have some swags and it is lovely. I just thought it would just be wonderful to line everything with lights.
Gotcha. Oh, I just thought I'd ask.
Thank you for asking.
Valid question, right? The more the merrier. Get them out there. All right. Anybody else, I guess, before? All right, with that, then I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting of February 12, 2024.
So moved.
Second. We have a double motion and a second. All